Mr. President, if you take your own call, please.
David Burris.
Here.
Wes Grimes.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Craft.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
You join me on the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first reminder, conflict of interest. If your folks have anything that you need to let the council know about before you vote, please do so. Need a motion to approve the agenda with one change under current claims on page four. The last item, Northwest Pike fittings, is a duplicate, so removing that charge will change the current claims to seventy-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Up, we do bills in between.
Oh, well, you're getting a motion for the agenda.
Yes. All right, so there's no change, right? Good to help myself. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the April third council meeting?
Make the motion to approve the minutes, April third council meeting, at second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, current claims, need a motion to approve the bills in between, please.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between to the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Those who do.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we're down to the current claims. Again, deleting the item on page four will change the current claims from or to seventy-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve current claims for seventy-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I got a question. On page eight, there's a bill in here for Farrell Farrell and Gifford, professional services, I guess I'm kind of curious what that is. Were they consulting, are they helping our current attorney, or?
Yes, they're helping our current attorney with the corner construction.
Approved by previous council.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the current claims?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up on the agenda is a proclamation to declare International Overdose Awareness Day, August thirty-first, two thousand twenty, in Hot Springs. Cheryl, are you here tonight? Do you have anything you'd like to say to the council?
First of all, I want to thank you. I appreciate it. Every year, thousands of people die from drug overdoses. Two thousand eighteen statistics say sixty-seven thousand people died from drug overdose in this country, just this country. Over seventy percent of those were opioid overdoses, which means our doctors are overprescribing. So that's sixty-seven thousand moms who have lost a child, like the sixty-seven thousand dads, how many little kids have lost parents, how many brothers and sisters have lost siblings. I lost my son, it's something that's very close to my heart. Val lost two younger brother. And we're not the only two in Hot Springs who have lost somebody to overdose. So are you doing this and helping bring awareness? Let's hope we can save one life, because I always say, if we can save one life, my son did not die in vain, neither did everybody else. And I thank you for doing what you're doing. It's great, we appreciate it.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
I thank you for fighting the fight. It takes a lot of effort, a lot of heart, and thank you for perseverance.
If us mamas don't speak out for our children, who's going to?
Exactly. Thank you.
I had a couple things here that I wanted to speak to, and Cheryl covered all of them but one. So I'll just add that North America continues to experience the highest drug-related mortality rate in the world, accounting for one in four drug-related deaths globally. So that's huge. So, the proclamation. We've got a seven-ten meeting, so I need to make a public hearing. Whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day is committed to providing a platform to acknowledge the grief felt by families and friends who have lost loved ones to overdose or had a permanent injury as a result of drug overdose. And, whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day spreads the message that the tragedy of overdose is preventable. And, whereas, drug overdose knows no limits. It does not recognize victims' race, religion, socioeconomic status, or family ties. Anyone can battle drug addiction and face a possible overdose. But recognizing overdose warning signs enables and empowers families and friends to prevent overdose-related death by call for help. And, whereas, the state of South Dakota is proactively running a campaign against drugs, the Meth or On it campaign also includes a hotline for those seeking resources to call or text. And, whereas, members of the community and organizations associated with drug abuse prevention and aid will work to remove the stigma associated with overdose-related drugs and reinforce the belief that no one should feel shame or disgrace due to an overdose-related death of a loved one. Now therefore, I, Robert Nelson, Mayor of Hot Springs, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim August thirty-one, two thousand twenty, as International Overdose Awareness Day in Hot Springs.
Thank you, and we wear purple on that day, if anybody can wear purple, wear purple red, and I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Do we have any communications from the public? If we jump ahead to personnel actions, we should be able to get those in before the seven-ten public hearing. I have a motion to approve the personnel actions.
I make a motion to approve personnel actions, A through F.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Caitlin, you have a report, don't you?
I do.
Bill, do you have a report?
I do not. The report advisory will meet Thursday the twenty-seventh, eight a.m. at the airport.
Larry, do you have a Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management report?
I do not. The next meeting will be September tenth at seven p.m.
Deborah, do you have a report, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Larry has an Evans Pudge Report.
Yes, I do.
Wes, do you have a parks?
Yes, I do.
Planning the zoning commission, I think Caitlin, you have one?
I do not.
You do not, all right.
We meet on the nineteenth this week, seven p.m., City Hall.
All right. Bill, do you have a public safety?
Public safety meets this Wednesday, the nineteenth, one p.m. at City Hall.
Okay, well, that gets us to our seven-ten public hearing. That seven-ten p.m. variance request from Frank and Lisa Verko for property at nine oh five South Sixth Street, legally described as Lot One and lots two A through A B, Block Nine, Termer's Edition, and lots eleven and twelve, Block Eight of Catholic and Hot Springs Edition, all in Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, approved, and South Dakota. Frank, Lisa?
How are you all? We are developing the property, just solved this right there, and we want variance request because we want to try to develop the back lot instead of the front. Sixth Street is kind of an anomaly in that it was platted at eighty foot, so even though the set back variance is twenty-five foot, we are already twenty-one foot from the back of the curb, so essentially we're forty-six feet from the back of the curb to start the building. The building currently to the northwest, that White House that Bill Dacher had forever is sitting thirty, at thirty foot, which is sixteen foot back from the variance. The storage building is sitting twenty-nine feet back from the variance. The house that hauls the zone that's sitting to the south of us is at sixteen foot as well. So I think there's been a variety of different probably zonings in that area over the years, you know, and now it becomes used, and like I said, we just would rather be closer to the street than be able to develop that back toward the south of the block.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Caitlin, this is a talk about?
Yes, planning and zoning recommends approving it.
I have no issue with it, so.
I don't have any issues, I'm glad you're trying to improve that, right?
Yeah, we've been working on it for about the last four years, and we've started putting that behind that, kind of getting what's in our head, but.
I'm just glad we're gonna have someone full-time overseer of our RV dump station.
Yeah, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Maybe later.
But also maybe part of the reason why I wanted to be as far south as we do. Well, I get it, but anyway, it is what it is, so.
It is a good piece of property, it needs to be something.
Are those your paint marks on the ground, Frank?
Yeah, I look kind of like our property.
And I appreciate that, I was out there the other day with my tape measure, it sure made understanding the drawing a lot easier, so thank you.
Kind of a practical aspect of it, we just finally got our done elevation survey done, and it looks like the farther we are, closer we are to the street, the less that the building will be in the flood zone, and that's another challenge, again, on that property in particular, is that in the same floodway, or in the flood, we'll quote and quote zone, and so the more the building that's out of it, the less you have to elevate it, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Anyway.
And we don't want to see you using free water from the dump station to water your lawn.
I had to work on that, but at least, you know, we'll see. Glad you keep an eye on it, Craig. Although I have used free water to fill up a couple tanks and water my wife's fire pod there up the street, but, anyway. Old disclosure, I'm not afraid of harshing it from the city if I'm putting that on the city property.
I'm saying that's for the city's medication, so.
I think it's very, very.
Any other questions? Does the public have any comments? No, hearing no comments, we'll close the public hearing at seven fourteen. And, I need a motion to either approve, reject, or table a variance request. I make a motion to approve the variance request from Frank and Lisa Verko for property at nine oh five South Sixth Street, legally described as Lot One, lots two A through eight A, Block Nine, Termer's Edition, lots eleven, twelve, Block Eight of Catholic and Hot Springs Edition, all in Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so thanks, it's back to you, Caitlin, administrative finance.
Admin and Finance met August tenth at one p.m. at City Hall. Present were myself, Mayor Nelson, Bill Lukens, John Gregory, Misty, Kathy and Susie Hayes. Um, in the old business, we discussed the Heat Leadensons Airport money update, they were going to have a phone meeting on August twelfth at eight thirty, which they've had now. We'll hear about that next time. Um, we talked about the American Legal, heading ordinance revisions, we're waiting for that to come back. The aviation fuel price review, and it just changed the price that morning on the tenth. We'll see how that goes, we'll be watching. And new business, we discussed the wastewater fund, CD had matured, and you'll see that on this agenda. Rates are still low right now, so as I mentioned, we leave at First Initiative Bank for a six-month term at point ten percent. You'll also see the recommendation on this agenda for the sidewalk money to be moved to the Bank of West account, so you'll see a higher interest rate there. We also discussed the recreation director request for a hundred additional hours. It was something previously talked about in Admin and Finance, and kind of it got lost during the COVID shuffle. Their budget can sustain it, and it's our recommendation to approve for a hundred hours, although it starts in January one, twenty twenty, coming through all the council. We also discussed the city ordinance discretionary tax formula rebate. There was this change in state law, Susie Hayes from the Fodder County Department of Legalization was there to discuss the change in law. Right now, the city does, or it did have a residential rebate program that was starting in two thousand eighteen. As of July first, it's, due to the change in state law, it's going to fall off the books. Since it started in two thousand eighteen, it's been about two years, it's a trial, no one has ever applied for it. So it's our recommendation to just let it fall off and take the measures to let it fall off. Um, our next meeting is September fourteenth at one p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you, Caitlin. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah?
Let's see, we met on August fifth, and at the Hot Springs Library at five p.m. Present were Schwarzerbach, Hagan, Broyles, Mueller, Weenya, Powers, and myself, representing the city council, John Gregory, Scott Sogi, and Mayor Nelson. Minutes from June third were approved unanimously. Welcomed were, onto the commission was Luke Broyles, replacing myself, and a farewell to Casey Carruthers. Discussion was had regarding the status of the Wish Oak Building. Mr. Gregory reported that there needs to be a legitimate purchaser before the building can be auctioned to satisfy the judgment. The city requires an agreement from that purchaser to post a performance bond for the remedial work, and agreement to a timeline to complete the stabilization of the building prior to the roadwork commencing, and to complete the restoration of the building. There has been some interest in the building, but no commitments at this point. It was suggested by the commission that the city do announcements and ads in the newspaper about availability of the building, and the mayor asked the commission to prepare an announcement for review and use by the city. There's progress going on with the Thousand and One Oddfellows Building downtown, which is wonderful to see. Mr. Sogi worked with the American Legion regarding the sign specifications on application, which was approved last month. The sign will be installed shortly, and that's their announcement sign that is up on the upper left corner of their building. We are also looking into why there is no flag on the American Legion cell tower, which was a requirement when it was installed. Discussion was had regarding revisions to the existing historic ordinances. Mr. Broyles had proposed some revisions which were reviewed. Ms. Johnston circulated ordinances from Deadwood and Rapid City. Mayor Nelson said that he believed that this commission, as a non-elected body, should not have enforcement authority, therefore, the extensive ordinance from Deadwood would not be considered because it's designated their historic commission as a judiciary fact-finding body. Further, he would not support a change to the present method of choosing commission members because he believed that the commission members should be appointed by the mayor subject to approval by the council. The city's desire is that the ordinance be amended to incorporate South Dakota codified laws regarding historic structures, and specifically that portion of the laws addressing neglect of historic structures amounting to a misdemeanor. Mr. Broyles and Mr. Powers will meet before the next meeting to incorporate the suggested changes into a proposed ordinance, so the commission can consider and discuss it. And our next meeting should be September second at the Library at five.
Thank you, Deborah. Evans Pudge Advisory Committee, Larry?
The Evans Pudge Advisory Committee was August thirteenth at twelve noon. Committee meeting was at twelve noon, the mayor and myself, Chris Hanson, Kathy Grand, Joshua Johnson, Tom Nas, Allison Verbusch, and Mary Smith were present. Allison was welcome as a new committee member. Health club update, put a discussion of the plumbing and tile work and expenses involved. Contracts will be brought in to give a bid on the tile work. The summer's revenue seems to have a slow progression, but overall, things are looking good for the summer. Members have said that they feel safe and secure with the safety measures that are in place. The puppy plan was discussed and a date was set for Sunday, September sixth. The next meeting will be September tenth at twelve noon. Meeting was adjourned at one o'clock.
One more time for that puppy punch date, please.
September sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Your Parks, Recreation, Recreation, and Cultural Development, Wes?
Yeah, we met Wednesday, August fifth, one p.m. Meeting was maybe a little longer than everybody wanted, but there was some pretty good attendance. On the old business, we were discussing the softball, the fence, yeah, the softball field. And decided we need to have Tracy maybe do a little looking at it first, so we can do some bear work and make sure we're not approaching any alleys. Talking about basketball, goals and nets, about maybe, I don't know, we're gonna have to fang this up because I'm being told we can do two and maybe not just one, we'll figure it out. Uh, the Centennial Park items, we talked about the Jennings Bridge replacement just real briefly, and then we talked about the concrete, maybe some stamped concrete around the, I don't know, the bathrooms or, in front of the bathrooms, right by the, oh, the.
Lockway.
Lockway into the, what you call recovered eating area, the gazebo or the shelters. We also talked about the Freedom Trail, noxious weeds, and probably don't have to keep doing spraying because the goats just think they're, we don't have enough goats to control the weeds from. And we talked about getting some bids for the sprinklers at Brookside Park, we have two, we're currently waiting on another one before we make any decisions, we'll have to kind of, I guess, go through that, hopefully by our next meeting we have that, keep moving forward with that. Cemetery, Lori, talked to her about the trees and the grants, I guess we did apply, if I remember correctly. The recreation, Kathy Grand, said I guess things are going real good, she's got some things to work maybe for September, I believe. Chris updated us on the Mueller Center, the air conditioner, he says it's working real good, but I kind of, I don't know if I agree. I understand, that's kind of, it's a tough, tough business to try to cool this place with our river water, but it's just unbearably hot, I guess. New business, we talked about the depot briefly, maybe talked to the water guys about trying to figure out a way if we can separate, just get some water for a spigot for watering the grass, because currently the water's not on down there, so we can't really do anything. We discussed maybe putting some dumpsters strategically, some parks, and maybe making some, all kind of fake, I don't know, maybe just a fence around them or something to keep them, so they look kind of decent, and try to keep the, I guess, the garbage shenanigans at a minimum. Playground at the Armory, kind of looks like it needs to either just be surplus or just disposed of, one or the other. Then we come up with maybe trying to figure out some uniform paint colors, so we can start painting graffiti, having just one color, try to make everything look a little more uniform. And we've talked about the lid and the concrete spring out of Lower Chitacla, and I'm not sure, but maybe might be a little further discussion, maybe some public work, so I'm not sure. We've briefly discussed a few other things about the dog park a little bit, I need to talk to the gentleman that has the gallery, and I see there was some other stuff in here about possibly someone else getting involved, some free labor, so I guess, our next meeting is gonna be September second at one p.m. at the Mueller Center, everyone's welcome. Oh, one other thing, we discussed a plaque for Dr. Whittenberg at the tennis courts. We talked a little bit about as long as there was no cost to the city, and it was just a plaque dedicated, Paul was a very big advocate for tennis, he spent a lot of his own time and money up there improving things, so I think it's a great idea, and so far, I haven't had any had any negative comment about it, so I'll probably put this up on the next agenda for possible action. Thank you.
Wes, if you want to get together, I can give my information.
Okay.
Thank you, Wes. The lid on the well at Lower Chitacla, we've been kicking that around a little bit more, and I'd like that to stay in parts, have you folks resolve what we're gonna do with that, so we'll just put a pause on doing anything there.
Yeah, I heard it kind of took a little life of its own.
Well, it did from a safety standpoint, and.
As it should.
If you were at the meeting, and Jerry was very concerned about safety, when it comes to safety, I was, I was willing to move ahead a little quicker, but let's go ahead and put a pause on that. There just to me, there isn't a lot of benefit to having the same topic picked around in three or four different committees, make a couple ways of conflicting ideas of what should happen, so I'd like to keep that in parts, get that resolved. Public Works, Dave and Craig?
I may have to refer to Craig, I had oral surgery today, he's not there.
Garden Street, widening and improvement?
It says here it's done, we never really talked much about it. Alley view, drive drainage, nothing's been done yet, culverts are lot and everything that they have, we've had a chance to work on them. Pavement markings, a lot of those are done, but not all of them yet. Alley-related repairs, Fresno, Fresno is done, but there's a lot of alleys that need repaired and stuff, and we'll be talking about that in the next meeting. Asphalt pavement repairs, patching, while the open spots with gravel in it around town, supposed to be two weeks in September, we're gonna be doing that. Freedom Trail, noxious weeds, and we decided to give that to the Parks Department, we don't know why it's on this. Additional CWT employees needed, we're looking.
Additional CWT employees needed, we're looking for one more from what I understand. Update equipment, update equipment issues. Our loader's done. It's to be delivered and they're gonna pick the old one up and take it back for us. State Veterans Home Property Boundary Tents is done. Cemetery Wall, Simon's Fancy repaired. We're gonna turn that over to the Parks Department. Murr boundary fence repairs, approximately 5,300 feet, three strands. They haven't started it on yet. Used truck purchased, 2020 budget, estimate 16,000. They located two that they're interested in in Iowa. I don't know, we'll probably send somebody down to look at them. Automatic meter readings, reading components, plan. We're gonna try to do a hundred of them, if I understand, this year. And then they'll, every year, do more until we get it done. Armory property, it's had planning and zoning, they're still discussing that. Car resident, certificate of occupancy. Geez, I don't have nothing about that, that's right. I apologize for that. What we're gonna want? Bolt building and demolition, we really didn't talk about that. All the demolitions down, so spray clean, hot spray cleanup. It's gonna be a week before, or two weeks, I forget, before the free dump day, which is supposed to be August 8, 8/28 till September 2nd. Acted nuisance properties or debts, Bear Avenue, which we call DNR on. Deadwood Terrace is done. Dexter Avenue, Evans Avenue, Wilson Avenue, the Wodega Building still needs addressed. Other permitting, we didn't really think about that. Ordinance review, ordinance revision, items requested. They're looking at it and planning and zoning, which is on the 19th. Giant sanitation, hydraulic spills, we called DNR on that. Combining workforce and equipment, water, wastewater, street maintenance department is working well so far, I'm told. Whoever property issue, this is new business, is with our attorney. Corey Owner meeting, July 20th. Didn't go as planned, I mean, we haven't, but it didn't go as we wanted it to, I guess. Jennings Bridge construction works up to date, they're still, they're not behind or anything. A rock removal in progress, awaiting easement documents. But I guess we already got the rock crushed in the road lane. Am I right about that?
We're not yet breaking up the rock yet.
Well, with roads down there, the rocks personally moved up. Fall River channel improvements, discussion, we're waiting for three bids. Inspection scheduled 8/26 at 8:00 with the Army Corps of Engineering for the channel. Ordinance 12XX, ordinance revising traffic code, markings and stuff. Dave and I still waiting to work on that. Power for water users contract, we went over that prior to this meeting and we still need to work with it. Vacant structure, registration and language, we reworked it and I believe it's on the ordinance table. Can't have new workforce housing, home homes, everything's going good. Walsh Building, Deb talked about that tonight. Airport mine meeting, that's one I talked about from August 12th, call in and didn't go as planned. The Bus Press pile, still growing. We're working on two piles now, we separated them, so see what happens there. And Culver property, we met with seven? Seven, who we meet with on the Culver property?
Representative from the Senator Reynolds office.
And that's about all I have. Our next meeting, I'm not sure, is it this month or the second of next month? Because it'd be on a Tuesday before the meeting, I mean, the second, second?
Yeah.
At City Hall, 1:00?
Thank you, Craig. The free dump week, that's September 28th through October 2nd? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Didn't know I said that.
Oh, September.
I didn't?
No, it got changed.
Well, I asked about that before the meeting.
Yeah, no, it never really changed since, since the spring announcement, we had spring cleanup. The fall date has been the same, we just got a little confused when we put it on calendar where it was supposed to be. But we got that worked out, so it hasn't changed. For the public's information, it's still September 28th through August, or through October 2nd. All right, Southern Hills Economic Development, no scheduled meeting at this point? Southern Hills Golf Course, we met on August 10th. Jason was there, Kathy, Don Willstedt, Dave Merrill, Gail Spenthal, Glenn Miller. It was a long meeting, but there wasn't, we spent a lot of time, Jason and Kathy spent a lot of time informing the committee about the budget and where all the money was, was being spent and what the council has tentatively approved for the golf course. And then they talked about the 2021 rates, what they should be, how much they should increase by if they're going to increase. Jason did some comparisons with other golf courses around the hills, light courses, Meadowbrook, Elks Club, Hart Ranch. And they, we're also talking about whether it'd be beneficial to have a junior rate to get more kids coming out. So they're still kicking around the rate structure. And once they get that settled on, then that's something that typically comes in front of the council around December for your consideration. The next meeting will be, I believe, September 10th. Meetings will be at City Hall at 5:00. All right, that takes us into ordinances. First item is first reading of ordinance 1215, an ordinance amending and revising Title IX, General Regulations. I made a motion on that one.
I make a motion, we approve an ordinance amending and revising Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 92, Parks Preparation, 92.19. Hot air balloons, Chapter 93, Fire Protection and Prevention, 93.02, International Fire Code, and Chapter 95, Nuisances, Declaration of Emergency, adding new sections. I mean, I'm sorry, 95.60 and 95.63, and maybe 95.38, Registry of Vacant Structures, E5, and adding noise in 95.7.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Craig had mentioned that we talked about this in Public Works. If you'll notice, this is a first reading again. You approved a first reading last time. But as we talked about in Public Works, I asked them to consider making some changes to the ordinance. And they're significant enough that it needs to have a second or another first reading. In your packet, you should have a vacant structure registration form. The first change that I asked them to consider is on the back of that page, at the top of it. This was brought to my attention by some of the folks that had vacant properties and they didn't like the language in that section at the top that they were being asked to sign. In reading it, I agree, and the committee agreed, so I'll just read it. I acknowledge, this is the original one. And here's the problem that folks were having with it. Acknowledge and accept the city's property maintenance codes and am aware of its requirements. My signature shall serve as notice for any abatement options the city may deem necessary to take against said property and that the cost of abatement shall be billed to that property owner. Upon the owner's failure to satisfy that bill within 30 days, the cost of abatement shall be considered an outstanding bill and will be required to be satisfied prior to any city services being activated or transferred regarding this property. That's pretty strong language, and it doesn't, it's, it's taken out of context in what the whole ordinance says. So my recommended change is the section in yellow. I acknowledge, I have provided, I have been provided a copy of and read Chapter 95, Nuisances as it relates to vacant structures. I also understand I have the right to appeal to the City Council any proposed action under Chapter 95.06. The city feels necessary to ensure this vacant structure complies with Chapter 95. So this form is what all the vacant property owners are asked to sign. So what I'm proposing is the changes to that first paragraph. And then the ordinance itself would be attached to this so that the folks can take a look at it and read it and see if they like it. So for you folks, I actually have attached the ordinance itself. And in the ordinance is the language that we need to still enforce any non-compliant vacant properties. There, on the second page, there's 95.04, which is the notification process. If the building inspector notices that there's something messed with the property, folks know how they're gonna be notified. 95.05 talks about the means of abatement and cost recovery. 95.06 tells them about the appeals process. So the ordinance itself has everything in it. And then the last change that I recommended is on the very last page. Item number five. A vacant structure registration form shall also contain, directly above the signature lines, a statement of acknowledgement and acceptance of the city's property maintenance requirements. So that's what that statement in that paragraph says. And I recommend it striking the rest of that paragraph. The rest of that paragraph, in essence, says what that first paragraph did. And it just seemed overly heavy-handed to make those kinds of statements and not make it very clear to the vacant property owners that they do have rights within the ordinance itself. The city can't just, nor should we, just come onto a property and address whatever we feel isn't adhering to our ordinances without giving proper notification to the property owner and then charging them. That's why this is in your packet. And that's why the second first reading of ordinance 1215. So the only change to the ordinance itself would be striking the last three quarters of paragraph five. The other part is simply the form that they sign and then is kept at City Hall. That's for your consideration. I thought we had the motion, didn't we?
It was a good thing we're all called up.
Motion, sir?
No, we got it.
This one? Okay, JR is asking if we need to include in the motion the striking of the language in that paragraph?
It is on there. It's the 95.38, Registry of Vacant Structures, E5, that identifies it.
Okay.
And the new copy, it's in there. The old one, you approved at the last meeting, it's not in there. But the new one, it is in there.
So if you approved the first reading tonight, then the second reading would have, in the last three quarters of section of paragraph five, strike, is that correct, Mr.?
Yep.
Another change is made to the registration form itself. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A real call though.
Okay, a real call, Mr.?
David Burris?
Yes.
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
JR Puddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Kaylin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to new business. Possible motion, discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the state financial assistance agreement Not everyone wants.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the state financial assistance agreement for project 3-46-020-142020 for the FAA designated eligible costs which may include prevention of preparation for in response to the COVID-19 pandemic items maintenance and development expenses for which CARES Act funding may lawfully be used. Project costs not to exceed 30K, airport expenses only.
Second.
Yeah, so what, I guess, what are they thinking about using money for?
We've already submitted requests for the upgrades to our airport fueling system. We will be, after this agreement goes in, submitting requests for personnel expenses after the approval date through the last payroll date. And then we're also considering and have been approved to use the funding. We have some leftover for tires, for a tractor.
What does this have, what does that have to do with COVID?
They're all allowable expenses through the grant agreement. Money was dispersed through the FAA to different airports. Our airport got 30,000. Those are reimbursable type expenses that are allowable.
Is money Congress approved to offset expenses that municipalities would incur because of COVID?
No, I disagree with some of this stuff. That's, that's crazy. Tires for a tractor, they got nothing to do with COVID.
Well, it's maintenance, the, so the FAA CARES Act money is dedicated to helping municipalities or smaller airports that have lost revenue or have some kind of lost revenue to continue to keep up with things like equipment and personnel costs. So we, when we approved the original grant agreement, those kind of things were spelled out in there.
Well, you can try to justify it, but I can't, I can't believe that our revenue to town airport because of COVID didn't carry on.
It wasn't something we applied for, it was something we were notified we received.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business, item B, a possible motion, discussion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from CS Inc. Doing business is Winter Circle.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for CS Inc. DBA Winter Circle to be used at Centennial Park at the Community Potluck Star Strike Steps event on September 5th of 20 and September 19th of 20.
Second. Any discussion? Is there anybody from Winter Circle that would like to speak on this? Anybody from the public that would like to speak on it? All in favor?
Aye.
New business, item C, a possible motion, discussion to set a public carion on September 9th or September 8th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application from HS PL OFT Properties?
I make a motion for a public carion on 9/8/20, at 7:10 p.m. for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application for HS PL OFT Properties LLC to be used... for HS PLOFT Properties LLC to be used at 311 Arthur River Street.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Who, who is this?
The building to the right of City Hall.
Oh, that little grocery store that thing? Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business, item D, possible motion, discussion to authorize Library Director Don Johnson to accept the United Way of the Black Hills Stand COVID-19 Grant for $2,000.
I make a motion to authorize Library Director Don Johnson to accept the United Way of the Black Hills United Stand COVID-19 Grant for $2,000. Funds will be used to purchase child-sized face masks.
Second.
Is there a lot of masks?
600?
They apparently have like 500 and some children in their roster.
So, covered very well. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business, item E, a possible motion, discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue a maturing CD at First Interstate, 9% South Dakota.
Make the motion to authorize the finance officer, to reissue the maturing CD at First Interstate, 680-100-1083-604, wastewater for the six-month term of 0.10%.
Second.
Discussion?
I got a question. Why don't we put that money in with the money we're getting from the state at a higher interest rate?
It's not from the state. It would be at Bank of the West, and we just keep the money segregated. We have throughout its history because it's for debt service reserve fund, as far as state revolving fund loan.
Well, then.
We could combine it with that checking account at Bank of the West, but we're hoping that CD rates go up and it would be a short term and we can keep this money segregated in the CD at First Interstate.
Well, can't we even get an account on its own at this other bank that's offering more interest?
Not for the same rate. No, we check rates at all the banks and they're included on that CD rate comparison sheet in your package.
So why is this one paying 0.27, this one's only paying 0.10?
That's a liquid checking account, that 0.27. So we could add it to that, we would keep it segregated anymore, we could. But we've always historically kept that money segregated for our debt service reserve. So we're hoping six months and rates will go up. But we did talk with Tracy Bastian, who is the department head for wastewater and then also admin finance about this time.
What would be the, what would you be like with that?
I can handle it.
What's your, uh?
She's working in vain, she'll do it.
It's a little bit harder.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business, item, yeah, possible motion, discussion to authorize the financier, finance officer to move the $2,367,000 received from the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to move the $2,367,000 received from the State of South Dakota DOT for the suspended sidewalk project from the Wells Fargo checking account to the Bank of the West checking account in order to maximize interest earnings.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business, item G, possible motion, discussion to approve travel training request from City Administrator John Gregory.
Make a motion to approve travel training request for City Administrator John Gregory to attend the Geo-Tech Solutions Seminar on August 21st, 2020 in Rapid City.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And our final, new business, item H, a possible motion, discussion to approve travel training request for City Engineer Tracy Bastian.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel training request for City Engineer Tracy Bastian to attend the Geo-Tech Solutions Seminar on August 21st of 20 in Rapid City.
Second. Any discussion? They're getting to threes now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr.? That takes us to your finance officer.
Thank you. In the finance office, we've been working on preparing the 2021 appropriation ordinance and certificate of municipal tax levy for presentation at the 9/8 council meeting. Make note that the next council meeting will be on a Tuesday due to the Labor Day holiday. So the 8th is actually Tuesday. I am gathering propane quotes for the 2020-2021 heating season, and that should be on the next agenda for comparison and potential approval. Then working on the 2021 workers' comp renewal. We do get a 21% renewal credit if I have that completed and submitted before the 18th of September. I'm not going to let that renewal credit go, I'll have it ready in time. Today, I got the last of the completed loss control improvement recommendations. I will compile those and share with the council and submit to safety benefits by the deadline of August 21st. We also get credits for complying or at least following, I'm sorry, following or at least accepting the loss control improvement recommendations made during our safety review. We did receive, it did make it in this batch of claims, but it'll be in the next, the first pay app from the Jennings Bridge Construction Project. We have already received one reimbursement from the grant for our pre-construction expenses. So that's moving ahead, and you'll see the first pay app in the next batch of claims. I have submitted as of Friday the first of two reimbursement requests to the state for the city designated coronavirus relief fund money. I submitted 232,000 for PD wages and benefits from 3/1 through 8/7, and approximately 8,600 for Evans Plunge lifeguard and front desk hours. Only the time that they spent cleaning, since those job functions were significantly impacted by COVID and they hadn't cleaned before, and now they're closing for cleaning. We are able to submit reimbursement requests for those hours that they are cleaning. A third request will be submitted sometime this week. That's for supplies, equipment, and other COVID-related expenses. We're right under 8,000 right now in total before this batch posts. We will be submitting the reimbursement request for the $30,000 of FAA CARES Act money with the agreement now approved tonight. I talked about it already, but in my notes, I was going to share what that includes so far. We have two council members attending the upcoming elected officials workshop in Kier on the 2nd of September. If you're not attending, certainly understand why you'd take pause in attending an event at this time. But I did notice that there's some excellent and helpful articles in the August Municipal League Magazine. It begins on page 42, covers a lot of the same information, I think, that you'll be reviewing if you go to that. So if you can't go to the meeting, make sure you take a look at those articles that they wrote, giving you kind of a crash course in basic government in this magazine. That's all of that.
Thank you, Mr.? John, you're up.
As usual, it's been busy. FMG, the state consultant, came to visit with us to discuss drainage from behind the buildings. We did a walking tour of downtown in our suspended sidewalk segment. To find out where almost water was going and how to handle it. We've got a discussion with ISG later this week about the lighting options for the suspended sidewalk and how that integrates with the planned lighting for the roadway. Our streets and utilities people, they're extremely busy. We got our motor repaired. They installed a water line in the alley between Third and Fourth Street. They had the inspection done on their aerial lift, their bucket truck. They worked on getting the rock broken up at the VA, got the ramp put in. They painted all the crosswalks around the school in addition to going around and patching some asphalt. Cattail removal. We've been meeting with different contractors, the three local contractors, and Tracy got one angle from Edgemark to come in to give us a quote to see if they can work with us on painting the cattails around Centennial Park. Jennings Bridge, removal of the old foundations, preparing for pile driving, which begins next week, is well underway. Bill Lucas prepared us a traffic light study for the intersection of Highway 18 bypass and South Dakota Highway 71 that was submitted to Rigs Offer and the DMT. We're also looking at submitting for a traffic light at the Dairy Queen-Taco Javons intersection for a future traffic light in that area. We did get all the three quotes on the sprinkler systems for Brookside. We'll be presenting that at the Next Parks Correct meeting. Blume Festival is August 28th through the 30th. We are coordinating some city resources, like trash cans to go down there, or airport personnel. And lastly, the Puppy Plunge is scheduled for Sunday, September 6th.
Thank you, John. I have just a couple things for you. I've appointed Allison Ritter Bush to the Evans Plunge Advisory Board to replace Casey Carruthers. Allison was the previous council representative for the Plunge Advisory Board. She brings a lot of familiarity with the daily and long-term needs of Evans Plunge. I also want to mention the fantastic work our lifeguards do daily at Evans Plunge. I spoke with Chrissa Plunge and asked her to highlight some of what our lifeguards do in their ongoing training. Four of our seven lifeguards have rescued active drowning victims this summer since we opened on June 15th. There have been five saved to date since then. Kyle Holm, two, Michael Wayman, one, Max Larson, one. Try to get this right, Mr.? McCoye, Zimigah, one. Our American Red Cross certified lifeguards are well-trained and water-ready. Their first responders who are trained and certified by the American Red Cross in lifeguarding, CPR, first aid, and AED use. Every two years, they are required to recertify with the American Red Cross. Their post-certification and service training consists of weekly swimming requirements and four hours of skills practice in the water and on land each month. They have a huge responsibility to our membership, guests, and clearly to each other, and put their own health and safety at risk. These are all the things that come together in an instant when our guards see someone is in distress and needing assistance. Such was the case when lifeguard Michael Wayman had to be rescued on a recent morning while working his 8:00 AM shift at Evans Plunge. He passed out home in lifeguard stand after being out sick for the previous five days. Michael fell into the pool from the stand and needed to be rescued. Opening shift lifeguard, McCoye Zimigah, did an excellent rescue with her training kicking in along with her adrenaline. Michael doesn't remember anything of the fall from the stand. Once McCoye was able to get into the handicap access ramp, Michael was able to walk up the ramp with assistance to our first aid area where he was evaluated. All staff were affected by rescues, but this one reinforced and can be anyone at any time. And this time, it was one of our own. Please recognize our lifeguards for the work they do and the mantle of responsibility they wear at as early as 16 years of age. Give them a shout-out on our Facebook page, drop off a snack for the break time, send them a note. We are grateful for them all. So with that, need a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion, go into executive session.
Second.
Can you state why you're going into executive session, please? Executive session per South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2-3 legal, and there will be no action taken afterwards?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What's that?